Right honourable members, I welcome you to the third anniversary's uh virtual meeting of the National Association of Student Speakers Ghana. Let's start with a word of prayer. Almighty God, humbly receive thee to look with favor upon this association. Grounds that it is in a performance high duty as in thy sight. Give divine guidance to the founders and executives of this association. And now, right honourable members, with discernment and vision, integrity and courage, through the labors of this association, the interest and wishes of members in the world and truly serve, and their good purposes for the common human life realized in our midst, amen. Right honourable members, I welcome you to our third anniversary celebration. Our members, sorry, right honourable members, we were not able to celebrate our first anniversary, we're not able to celebrate our second anniversary. By the third anniversary, we are just commemorating it to just a very short one-hour meeting. We want this meeting to be short. It is just a commemoration. Maybe the fourth anniversary will be bigger, the fifth anniversary will be the biggest. So, I want to thank you all who have joined for honoring our invitation at such short notice. So, we'll move on to item three, which is history records, future of Nasak. Right honourable members, some of you will keep on asking, what is Nasak? Nasak, the National Association of Student Speakers Ghana. It's not an advocacy group, but rather a capacity building group for student speakers and youth speakers, gradually inclusive. We have speakers from SRC legislative chambers, from traditional universities, technical universities, private universities, colleges and training centers. Student Parliament House speakers and tertiary institutions, youth Parliament speakers are here. The focal point of this group is to teach and give exposure to the speakership community, promoting standard parliamentary practices and networking among members. In doing so, right honourable members, we strike out membership dues and only accept your vibrancy and active participation in our activities. Other necessary contributions may come up as time goes on, such as contribution to bid farewell to departed speaker and a contribution to summon a physical meeting of the group. Foundation. Nasak was somebody called at the beginning, the Ghanaian SRC student. It was called the Ghanaian SRC Speakers Cocoss. It was started on the first March by Jones Negashim Manodi. Prince Deche, Chairman Jones Amashim Vice Chairman Administration Collins Mansoufrenpong, Vice Chairman Operations Derek Ajikum, Secretary Asilu Kavania Ajia. Activities related by chamber briefings. There's a presentation by incumbents on their chambers. Bench marking stations to evaluate membership presented. To evaluate the membership, to evaluate members' presentation on chima briefings. Four, adding new members and promoting network among members. Five, guiding members in managing their chambers and seats. Duties of members. Right honourable members, some of the duties of you is participating in activities of this association by giving responses and making presentations when requested upon. Two, presenting matters of peculiarity to the chambers or this group for consultation and response or directions. That is when you call the leadership. Living clear matters of your chambers. Three, sharing posters of sitting and other limited activities. I was interrupted by a call. So, let's proceed with the presentation. Sharing posters of your various settings and chima-related activities on our group page. The next one is sharing group-related lectures to subordinate speakers, that is deputy speakers, and then speakers of your JCRs on campus, departments and all others. These are duties of members. This group is basically aimed at improving chairing skills of all members, especially incumbent speakers. Former speakers remain speakers because once a speaker, always a speaker. Former speakers willing to lecture can contact leadership who appointed this for lectures in the group. Incumbent speakers willing to share ideas and to lecture us are equally welcome. Now, how exactly started this group? Right honourable members, uh the insertion of this group. We wanted to promote parliamentary democracy, but it was very hard to do that just within an area. Having learned a lot of things, I wanted to share the ideas and then guidance and extend it to speakers nationwide. And due to our frustration to do that, we came up with the idea to start this group. We actually created the WhatsApp group on twenty-nine of Mar- uh February twenty-two twenty, which was a leap year. So, there was a group was created on a leap year, but the actual group started when we started reaching out to speakers of other institutions and adding them, it started from first March twenty-two twenty. So, yes, um. So, as I said, that is the history of Nasak. That is the history of Nasak. And that this is what we do. We are not an advocacy group. That is why you don't hear Nasak in the radio, on internet advocating for this and that. We are solely a capacity building group. We are solely a capacity building group, and that is the end of it. We could do the advocacy, but how how would that make us stand out? We we don't have any interests in peculiar issues ongoing. We, our interest is that we want our student speakers to have um standard in want our students because to have standard in their chairing abilities. So, that is basically what Nasak does. So, i- in accordance with the program we are prepared for today, we'll move on to the next. The next item on our uh on our timeline is uh, I want to talk about some few things that um that we are here to explain to you before the chima briefing starts. So, right honourable members, we are going straight to the next item, well. Motions. Briefly, we want to talk about motions. When we talk about motion, what we are talking about is motions are proposed out by a member of parliament for an action to be taken. Then, anytime a motion is being moved, it needs to be seconded. When the motion is seconded, a decision is not taken. That is when you, the speaker, ought to put a question. A question is a call for a vote. So, basically, motions are just proposals and secondments are support of the proposals. Moving to the next item, which is voting. There are three models of voting, right honourable speakers. The first one is voice vote. The second one is head counts. And the third one is secret ballots. So, as a speaker, whenever a motion is moved and seconded, the first thing you do is to put the question, which is calling for a voice vote. And it's a question you put because you want their response. So, how is this done? So, assuming um a member moved the motion, right honourable speaker, arise that this house do adjourn. Then someone seconds, arise that this house do second, I second the motion for the adjournment of this house. Then you, the speaker, will now put a question. Our members, motion moved and seconded, I now put the question to the house. All in favor of this motion say aye. Not in favor of the motion say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Therefore, these honourable houses agree to adjourn to this date. So, that is a voting of the house. And the thing is, aye, aye, yee, aye. And then the other one is nay, nay, yee. It is a voting procedure of the house. And whenever a voting is being done, it's a decision of the house. So, anytime a motion is being moved and seconded, you ought to put the question. The second uh voting model is head count. Head count is when the members stand up to be counted or they raise their hands to be counted or they stand up to be counted or they move out maybe to the left side of the speakers' base to be counted. That is the open type of voting. Then the next one is the closed type of voting, which is secret balloting. When they vote on a paper and then at the end of the vote, you don't know whose vote is thought, but at the end, you have a number of votes to count. That is secret balloting, which is the third type of voting. Amen. Moving on. Another way for the house to take a decision is through the directions or the rulings of the speaker. Right honourable members, as a speaker, you need to ensure that everything is ongoing well. So, when things are ongoing well, you ought to guide the house and put the house order. Sometimes, cut short deliberations, you can make rulings. I want a motion is being moved and seconded, you cannot rule. The only ruling you can do is when it's a preliminary objection to the motion in question. So, assuming the motion is not qualified, either speaker can overrule that motion and call for another motion, or you make a ruling for a decision. That is the only circumstances that that is the only circumstances that um you don't put a question. Moving on to the next one, roofs. You all need to have roofs. I'm sure you know about that. I did a presentation on roofs. There are different types of roofs. You should all have standard parliamentary roofs. It's important that you know that parliamentary roofs are not like coir roofs. You don't have big arms. You have normal shaped arms, like suit. And there's a panel attached to the arm. And then parliamentary roofs don't close up like coir roofs. Right from the neck, it extends down so that your suit will show. Right honourable members, do not wear small unders roofs. You should wear suits or shirts. The ladies, whatever you are wearing, ensure that it is long sleeve. See, when you are wearing short sleeve under under the robe, it looks like you are naked. It looks like you are wearing the robe without anything under. So, ensure you are wearing long sleeve. And always wear a collar, something with a collar. Because without the presence of a collar, it doesn't really look like you are wearing something under the robe. So, please ensure you do that. And please ensure that your clerks are ruled. Don't rule with deputy speakers, leaving your clerks out, okay? That is it. The mace. The mace is the authority of the house. And the mace is the gold-like metal that is around four to five sheets. That is put in front of the clerk's table. The mace being put anywhere else is not a mace, but a staff. Some of you have staff, but you call it mace. A mace is not held by a person during proceedings. It's been put in front of the chair. The master can bring it. But when those of you who have staff and you are calling them mace, please check them. Gavol. A gavol is the authority of the speaker. It is used to call for order and it is used to support decisions of the house. At any time voting is being done, you bang the gavol. Anytime you make a ruling, you bang the gavol. And if you want to put people to order, you bang it three times. Moving on to the next one. I encourage you all, right honourable speakers, to ensure that you record your settings and upload to your Facebook pages. You can only be a speaker of an SRC Parliament once. If you are lucky, you'll be twice. So, ensure that you record your settings. You can ensure that the SRC streams it to the student Parliament houses. Try and record them and upload them. These are the only video recordings you can watch day after of you presiding over a house. Moving on, chima sitting arrangements. We have different type of chima sitting arrangements. The one at Parliament of Ghana is called the ARC. That is the ARC um chima sitting arrangements. We also have opposing benches. That is the one at the House of Lost and House of Commons. We have cycle, we have classroom arrangement, we have semin arc. These are all types of system arrangements. So, do not always use the classroom arrangement. Sometimes change the arrangement so that you give a different vibe, okay? State of the SRC address. State of the SRC address is a message delivered by the SRC President. Please, state of the SRC address. You don't use normal sitting arrangement on the speaker's dice. Go and look at the sample that Parliament of Ghana will be doing for President Akufadu on the eve of March for the twenty-two twenty-three administrative year of the Republic of Ghana, the government. It's a message and you, the speaker, should read a note. We'll share a note for you. And minutes and attendance. Ensure that minutes have been taken and attendance. Please, you don't read minutes though. The minutes are presented, you share the copy ahead. Members will look at it and will make the correct actions that they want to make. And minutes are uh records of whatever transpired at the session. So, please take notes of that. Right honourable members. Um so far, do you have things? Because we want to move to the next item on our agenda. Are there any questions? Okay. Okay. If there are no questions yet, we want to move to the next thing on the agenda, which is uh the chima briefing. All incumbent speakers are to do chima briefings. We'll be sharing the timetable with you. The chima briefing is a way of creating exposure for members. You get to know what goes goes on at all the Parliament. That is why the group is there. So, the chima briefing is an important exercise and I want to encourage all of you to do it. What is the chima briefing? It's an opportunity for each incumbent speaker to breathe their cocoss or their hell on his or her chima. The necessary information for the briefings are the name, program and picture of the speaker, deputy speakers, clerk, deputy clerk, chef, SRC President, Vice President and Chief Justice. This is what only SRCE speakers. The name of your chima, number of members, majority leader, minority leader, majority chief with minority chief with your robe. Want to see a picture of your robe? A picture of your mace, a picture of your gavos, of your settings, as a sample of your minutes, sample of your order paper, a sample of your letterhead, a logo of your chima if there is. A logo of your chima if there is. A sample of a bill being passed by the House on Act and any video or picture recordings if you have. These are things we expect you to share during your chima briefing. It's very important for all incumbent speakers to do. And then pictures, you send them as pictures. I want to acknowledge all the incumbent speakers of the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three administrations. We are currently around thirty-one. So, we have Mr. Charles McCarthy, Akun Nyemi, UDS Central SRC GA Speaker. Mr. Tumasi Amukwud Benjamin, Speaker of Parliament for the SRC of Kumasi Technical University. Mr. George Amenyon, Speaker of Amostar Student Parliament House. Mr. Desmond Azuma, President of Valevi University SRC Senate. Miss Osman Ahmed Ajiza, Speaker of UPS's Student Parliament House, UPS's University of Professional Studies Accra. Speaker, um Mr. Christopher Sunfo Amako, Speaker of the Kwame Kuma University of Science and Technology SRC Parliamentary Council. Mr. Bright Sumpo Sen- Sen- Senya, Speaker of K University Student Parliament Houses. Mr. Prince Dodger, Speaker of University of Energy and Natural Resources, Main Campus SRC Parliamentary Council. Mr. Yakubu Wahabo, Speaker of Ajum- Amaku Campus University of Education, Wenyiwa Local Assembly. Mr. Sylvester Williams Elikem Aziblim, Speaker of University of Mines and Technology SRC Legislative Assembly. Miss Pagita Abenan Adbertfu, Speaker of Oteknika University SRC Parliament. Miss Janet Ayeko uh Tumijo, uh Speaker of Pentecost University College Ghana. Is it Pentecost University? I'm sure, SRC Parliament, yeah, um, yes. Um. Mr. Imano Darko, Speaker of K University Uwase Campus SRC General Assembly. Mr. Sebastian uh Agum- Aguman Umba- uh Umbagundri, Speaker of um SD the University of Business and Integrated Development Studies Youth Parliament. Mr. Frank Dodger, Speaker of Ghana Techno- uh I think, is Ghana Communication Technology College. Uh yes, uh SRC General Assembly. Miss Elizabeth Pentle, Speaker of Utah Student Parliament House. Mr. Edmono Seusu, Speaker of University of um Cape Coast SRC Parliamentary Council. Primpa, Speaker of Ghana Institute of Journalism, Inamak SRC General Assembly. Mr. Andy Manah, Speaker of Accra Technical University General Assembly. Mr. Maxo Adongo uh uh Indubire, Speaker of Suneni Technical University SRC Par- uh uh um um uh I think it's Mbaki. Speaker of Takrawi Technical University SRC Parliamentary Council. Mr. Jeff Tausu Baten, Speaker of University of Health Analysis Sciences SRC Parliament. Mr. Mohamed Abou Al Hasan, Speaker of Kufredatakenkambresi SRC General Assembly. Uh Mr. Osman Abla, Speaker of IDB IDS SRC General Assembly. Mr. Ibrustadi. Mr. Ahmed of University of Ghana SRC General Assembly. Mr. Maclean Kodjo Ta Ujo, Speaker of Pentecost University SRC Parliament. Mr. Frank Quetti Umana, Speaker of King's University Colleges SRC Parliament. And Speaker, right, uh Mr. Isaacusi uh Ureku, Speaker of University of Ghana Accra City Campus SRC General Assembly. Case that we have. Inclusive of myself. I'm the Speaker of Youth and Party Parliament, speaking to incumbent speakers. So, these are the incumbent speakers that we have. To mention the name is an evidence that we are doing our job. Really to create the network and then create an opportunity for you all to link up. That is exactly what we are doing. Um. So, at this point in time, are there any questions before we move to the next um item on our agenda? Are there any questions so far? Okay. Um now, the last item for us to deliberate. So,
we didn't honor go.
Premium roundabout. Yes. Yes, Madam Speaker, please answer your question.
Um he sounded that um with, let's say, it's my sweet constitution to present an electoral commissioner to the Parliamentary Council for them to accept the electoral commissioner. But here is the case, when with the previous administration, there were questions shown to the dominated EC, but um they didn't allow the question to shoot. And I want to ask, is it right? Because we are about to have a similar section like that.
Then, ah. The electoral commissioner question for what?
Yes, just like they overbrought that aspect, and I'm asking if it is right.
No, no, even the electoral commission of Ghana comes to answer questions thrown out by members of parliament. So on no basis is that right. The electoral commission is responsible to the parliament. You can, and also answer any question thrown in by members of parliament for them to have trust that the electoral commissioner can do their job. So on no basis is that right. The electoral commissioner is answerable to parliament, and before parliament come, approve his CI or his plans, they will surely throw questions. So he has to answer. So what happened that time is not right.
Okay, thank you, honourable. Thank you.
Welcome, please. Please, is there any other question? Is there any other question? Okay. In the absence of any questions, we are here to do the last item on, uh, I. Now, uh, uh, train. The gathering of resources. And, uh. If you hold it in Accra, if you can afford bringing another person, you bring. While speakers in town can bring as much as five people, speaker, deputy speakers, and then maybe majority and minority. And looking at the number of participants, uh, we don't have any funds. Us know very well, we don't pay dues. So we don't have any ready funds anywhere. And to organize such a conference, we need to rely on the financial capacity of members. So we are still looking through how much each member should pay, dependent on the number of participants. Initially, we were thinking of holding a three-day session of which we have to get accommodation. But we prefer that it should be a one-day activity, maybe from nine to ten. So that members who can do retention, they should do a retention, so that we can save costs. So it's just going to be a one-day activity. We'll bring members of parliament. Yes, it's equivalent to the Commonwealth Parliamentary Association. And we share a picture of that. If the speaker cannot come, his sense is deputy, and they are all in route, please to show the speakership community. So that is it. And we are still looking at the most reliable dates, the amounts to be paid by members, and we are equally working on the budget. Luckily for us, a Wisconsin university college wants to host us, and hopefully it goes. My transportation has gone high, and all other prices gone high. It makes it difficult to organize such a meeting for members to come from afar. Yeah, so this is the reason why you are unable to do this. And then also, at the beginning or the start of this association, we are hoping to honor members' participation. But as a matter of fact, we will not be able to do that. So if it is a promise you have made, I want to sincerely apologize that we cannot fulfill that promise. We cannot fulfill that promise. So the lot is ready for the the speaker. Hello, are there any questions by members?
Okay, yeah. Right, honourable.
Thank you, I can't hear you.
Yeah, if it is possible.
Uh, please ask your question again, thank you.
Okay, I was asking if we can come along. Right, honourable. I don't know.
I don't.
Hello.
Yeah, please ask your question.
Come along with our. And then ask my question. This can hear me.
Can we?
Honourable Mohammed.
Can you come along with me?